Getting right personnel. So I'm one of those people, and people may recognize my name, Lou sticks with you, but I've been writing letters in the paper and attending meetings because I feel, not that we don't want to support, I absolutely, and I think many people like me, really feel we've got to step up and support fire and rescue more, and we will because of the personnel issues. But what I would like to see is a real study, a comprehensive study that looks at facilities, buildings, equipment, staff, organizational structure, and how we build a centralized, not just service, but a culture that is unified, that the whole town can participate in. So for that reason, having said that, I am not against spending money, absolutely not. Quite the contrary, I am just looking for a complete evaluation of the situation like we did in 2008, maybe use that same resource, they're a very well-recognized company internationally, and when I have that information, I can vote, but until I don't, I'm going to vote no. Not because I don't support our fire and rescue, I absolutely do, but I want to see the proper study done with a complete plan, including all aspects of the town's departments. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Ruth Smith, and I just have a question, and it's not nearly as organized as everyone else's, but I know how fast people got to my house from the fire station, I live way out on Basin Point, so I feel like...
My name is Bruce here, Fire Chief on Simontive, fire rescue. To answer the question of response time to Basin Point area, for example, if you looked at the 2008 study, you'd find that the average response time with volunteer fire department responses throughout town to any particular locations approximately 13 to 14 minutes. A truck responding from a central location such as Mountain Grove, for example, could reach the Basin Point area in nine minutes. It almost had, when you eliminate the time it takes to leave your home, clean the snow off your charger, clean the windshield, get to the station and leave, when you can leave directly from a building into a property to go, we've eliminated that response time. This building location is really about response time. It's our ability to get to your home quicker. Some of my best response times, for example, at Harson Knack, I had a reported kitchen fire at the Autumn Colony, if anybody's familiar with the Autumn Colony, I'm at Harson Knack, and my best response timed for that in the summer, in the evening, was nine minutes from the time of the call till we had a truck on scene, and that's a very short distance from the station. So a central location is not going to extend your response time, in fact, it's going to reduce it by almost half. Thank you.
I'd like to talk to the volunteer issue because people are concerned that the volunteers will sort of disappear if there's a central station, and what we have here is the central station is part of the plan for coverage of the entire town. The volunteers are, as you know, are dedicated and all want to do our thing, and will continue and are very, very much needed, but currently, the volunteer pool that we keep talking to about we get more volunteers, look around this room, think about the town meeting when the age of everybody that came to the town meeting, and that's the volunteer pool, okay? The younger people who live here in today's world, both parents work, most of the time they work outside of the town, so it isn't like somebody can drop what they're doing and respond, so we don't, for the most part, those folks can't afford the time and the real involvement to get qualified to become a volunteer, and all of us who volunteer and all these kinds of things, you're not going to get interior firefighters from anybody in this room, including myself, that you need four interior firefighters before any firefighter gets into any building, okay? What we've done in this town is there are no certified paramedics, I believe this is true, no certified paramedic volunteers at this point, and what happened was the town then went to the hospital and contracted, so there is that dedicated paramedic and town road, okay? And now we're adding, we added five-day coverage for paid firefighters, and now we ended to seven days, and as you can see where this is going, part of that plan to comprehensively cover everything is that new fire station. And the other thing is that you've got to understand that there are three independent non-for-profit organizations that make up the fire department, right? There's a non-municipal fire department that modifies the equipment, but each individual fire department has to raise the funds to run itself. The town makes a contribution for sure, but the basic expenses of running all of that comes from philanthropy and whatever else we come up with. But the personnel situation is not going to get any better, and I think any reasonable person will agree to that, and the new fire station is an answer to that, because as this progresses, we're going to wind up having to have more and more paid folks.
I just want to make one more comment that I forgot, so, I don't know why it just started to do that. We do have three days shown right now, but we have planned for a fourth day, so if you'll notice, so we have a little mezzanine right that's over all these last little end rooms here, so those will be, that'll be a 22-foot-high apparatus bay, those will be like eight-foot-high, there's a storage mezzanine above, we put it on this side, so in the future, you can add a fourth bay, so, and also be in a pre-engineered structure, that would be one of the easiest type of structures to add a fourth bay, so I just, it's not, it's a small thing, but it is, we did plan for some growth in the station, I just wanted to point out, thanks.
All right, any more discussion on this item? One last chance before we move on. All right, at this point, we'll close the hearing on the central station, and we'll move to the administration building in a few. Thanks, Andy. All right, who wants to leave this discussion out?
Good morning, Tom Nuskele, new chair of Mitchell Field Committee and Mitchell Field steward. So the question that will be on the ballot is the demolition of the admin building, I'll do a piece of housekeeping here, I just heard. This is the title of the building that was the administration building at Mitchell Field, it does not involve the movement of the town offices. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page. So in the picture that you see there straight ahead is the brick building with the garages on the left side that are directly in front of the causeway. Yesterday, we had a warf permit review for the causeway boat launch, and everything is pretty much on track to put the RFP out here in the end of the month or shortly thereafter, to have a contractor in place by the end of the summer to do the in-water work as required by state law during the November to January timeframe, and have a boat launch on the north side as depicted there in spring of 2026. If you'd like to see a picture of it, we have a ward on the side wall over here, and you can take a look at that. You see a red arrow on the left of the building that points up hill, that is the service road that was put in when we took the old pier out, and that would be the way that boat launch traffic accesses the boat launch without interfering with the beach traffic, which would be where you see the big yellow arrow. The Mitchell Field Committee took a hard look at this, and we have proposed to demolish the building. The reason we want to do that is threefold. First, everybody wants it down, when you talk to people who use the field all the time, it gives us more open space. The demolition plan calls for taking the building down to slab, which would mean that the concrete base slab would still be there, but it gives us the open space, more picnic tables, more open views, more opportunities for family reunions and picnics, and all the normal things that we do there gives us more room. Number two, the reason we want it down is where you see the white garage doors sort of right at the head of the causeway. If we take that building down, that is paved on both sides of that garage, and it would allow us to develop a circular traffic pattern coming behind the building and driving through the garage area and back up that frontage road so that the beachgoer traffic, the kayakers, the people that are offloading, the scoop here, the day campers, we have a separate traffic pattern from the boat launch traffic. Paul Plummer has indicated that this boat launch will get busy because it comes with parking. Parking for the boat launch trailers will be the concrete pad that's up above the man stand. The third reason to take the building down is we don't know what all the impacts of having a boat launch and beachgoers are yet. We know we need bathrooms, but we can still have a small bathroom set and possibly a small office if we need somebody to manage the boat launch. We don't know what we need, but if we take this building down, it gives us the opportunity in the future to respond to those changes and do whatever we need to do. Now, there's been an alternate proposal to rehab part of the building. That's an indoor recreation and event center? Those are nice ideas, we just don't feel that they should be right at the waterfront, there's no additional parking. I don't know where, how you would have an event center or recreation because those parking, the parking area that's immediately behind the building is used by beachgoers and day hikers and everybody else, so if we don't have any additional parking, opening that building to do something doesn't improve the traffic flow or anything else. So that's where we are. And, you know, those are good ideas for what to do with the building, but, you know, let's take a holistic look, we have a group that's taken a holistic look at the field, and there might be a better place to do that, where they would have plenty of parking, plenty of handicap parking. That's why the gazebo is where it is, because we can have special events there, and they don't impact people who just want to come to the waterfront. I'm available to answer questions, anytime somebody wants to come to the field and talk about all this, I'm around. Thank you.
Ellen Blue, Mountain Road, Great Island. I think the developments at Mitchell Field are all wonderful, it's great to see that we're doing a launch, that Mitchell Field is getting used more and more. I've been in town not full-time, but part-time, and then now full-time, five years that I've been here for over 20 years, so I'm very excited about all that. I just want to address process here, so I'm also, I tend to be a building reuse person, I was a trade show organizer, a show, nationwide, international show actually called Restoration and Renovation, so I'm dealt with rehabbing buildings and repurposing and reusing, so that part of my background tends to say, hey, wait, hold. So that part of my background tends to say, hey, wait, whoa. Um, yeah, the building's ugly. Uh, can we put lipstick on the pit? Can we make it look better? Can we repurpose it for other uses? I think the rec center is a great idea. I also think, uh, looking at our ancient population and a lot of them, a senior center, you think there's a senior center might be good use. I just applaud the group that is hoping to get a chance before the building gets demolished to look at uses of it and how to fund it as a nonprofit. I'm also a volunteer for the Yankers, so, uh, you know, I'm very tied into that. And not that a newspaper is a building, two completely different things, but the paper has actually proven you can do a nonprofit and you can run it efficiently as a business and make it pay for itself. I have to believe that that might be possible here, especially I know a couple of people that are behind that effort. They're very intelligent, very far sighted, very careful, uh, you know, or thoughtful. Uh, so I just want to say I personally will be voting no to demolish the building because I want to have time to let that group show what it wants to do. And I understand there are challenges if the building stays and with the launch and everything, that's a previous speaker said, I understand that. But I just want to have time to look at all those issues and, and see what this committee comes up with. So I'm voting not to demolish the building right now. Thank you.
Nobody on the committee has a problem with the proposals for the use of the building. The problem is there is no additional parking. And if you come down there in the summer, that parking lot's full. People are going to the beach, they're day hiking. So if you open the building and you want to have a big event center there, where are they going to park? That's the issue, the central issue.
I just want to jump in just, I want to jump in this one second. I'm Philip Connor and I'm on Mitchell Field Committee, live on the net. Uh, parking keeps being mentioned by the Mitchell Field Committee as being an issue. We formed a subcommittee on the Mitchell Field Committee and we found lots of areas for parking that can be put in around the field. We found, uh, we identified three or four areas where we could probably put 50 cars each and, and it's there. We've got 116 acres or whatever it is, and a lot of it is suitable for parking. So parking is not an issue and we can get better parking than having to go all the way up with a concrete pad, but parking is not an issue.
Hi, I'm Lily out from commercial neck. And I think actually there's a couple of issues here. One is the big picture issue and the second is the money issue. We'll be addressing the money issue in a minute. But the big picture issue is that the town has owned Mitchell Field for 25 years, right? And there have been a number of studies starting with 2003, 2004, 2005 master plan. All of them have said, let's see about that building there. We need bathrooms, we need nice bathrooms. That's been like a thing from the beginning. In 2004, the selectmen had a warrant article about tearing all the buildings on Mitchell Field down for $40,000. But it was defeated at a town meeting because people wanted to see what could happen with that building. Now, 20 years later, we're kind of in the same place. But if you look at Mitchell Field and you look at the two big successes there, I think everyone loves the concerts in the summer. They've been a huge hit. Everyone loves the community garden. That garden has fed more people in Harpsville than most other towns can claim. It's pretty wonderful. And those were private public partnerships that worked. And so all our whole group is trying to do is say, since the first step in this whole process is to remediate the administration building and since that it's going to take, the estimates are, the shortest estimate is one year, the several more estimates are up to two years because there's grant funding and we've all talked about what grant funding is like. Um, that is, is nothing can happen at all. Can it be taken down? Can it be reconstructed until that remediation is completed and certified? So our group had hoped to have that year to do some serious fundraising because we all know, as we were talking about for the fire station, right now fundraising is in flux like crazy everywhere throughout the country, not just here. But it would have given us a year to sort of refine the plans. We know not only bathrooms are needed, but we know a lot of private organizations in Harpsville need a larger meeting space than we currently have in town. Uh, Hart's Legion Home Lunches, for example, are seating 100 people and we don't have an indoor space that can hold 100 people seated. So we wanted that year, uh, but unfortunately that didn't happen and it's like been voted to be the ballot issue is remediate, tear it down, that's it. So we would have loved to have had that year. So unfortunately, I hate to say that we're going to vote no on this because we all want to see something happen there. But if the only choice is tear it down or, or not, that's going to be the choice that we made. But I think the other bigger issue is the money issue. So, uh, it just happens to be mine.
Hello, Paul, here, uh, Great Island. First of all, my involvement on the administration building, saving it is personal from the standpoint that we've had at least multiple reports saying that 50% of the users would like to see the building saved over years. So whether it's the Mitchell Field Committee report that states that or it's the NCOD report that says that 50%, so I'm here as a voter saying, listen to our voters. It doesn't need to come down. I would like to see the building reused and I think that's the principle and purpose. The issue of parking seems to be just nonsense to me to put proper planning as part of any end game. And we've got a boat launch that you kind of park almost quarter mile away. Doesn't make sense. You look at any other state boat ramp, the parking or trail parking is right beside it. That's not the plan. That's not my fault. The issue is waterfront is the user. Why not have an accessory building used that complements that than to, to put hurdles in our way? It's an opportunity for this town to come together. And I believe the numbers that I wish to speak to that Lily indicates is I've done most of the estimating on what the cost would be for renovating the project. I, since I asked the town at our previous meeting, what the actual demolition cost would be and nobody has responded to that, I actually went out to find a number from a local contractor, uh, actually local greater than Harpsville contractors. Um, and I, I've got a fair number that came back $137,000 to take the building down. So it's not 80,000, it's 137 and that is only if it's remediated first. So that's, let's be careful. If it's, if not remediated, the demolition material has to go to Bangor as the only licensed lead based, um, facility in the state at this time. So there's probably an additional $20,000 of trucking on top of 137. So there is 157 versus the 80,000 in the environmental report, uh, warrant numbers. So I, I've got numbers that are real. I've got facts, the environmental report was kind of biased and I want to make sure that we're voting on a fair, ethical project because that's what our community is assisted to. So let's make it fair and say no so that we have an opportunity to put the NCOD planning process so that we can move forward to remediate and then eventually renovate this building. Thank you for your time.
Hello, Bryce, still on the net. And I'm also in the Mitchell Field Committee. As Paul, you know, we had worked on this for years and finally got to the point where we're ready to do something, boat launch and everything else that's associated with that, including fixing up that building that we called up as the van stand for boat trailer parking. And I may just address the project for a minute. I have that occasion, the number of times I've asked in years to drive from North London to Standish on Route 35 right along the seven edges of Sabina Lake. There's a very nice boat launch setup to southwest corner of Sabina Lake with limited boat trailer parking. And if you drive down Route 35 on a weekend in the summer when it's nice weather, boats and trailers are lined up all along the north side of Route 35. And I'm going to estimate maybe going back a quarter of a mile because there's no room in that boat launch device as it is parking. We can accommodate that easily. But the real issue we have is with the location of the building, the admin building itself. And when the, uh, admin building group, as we call it, met with Mitchell Field discussed this, they emphasized compromise. And I personally like the idea of, of some kind of a venue there for public use. I don't think that it should be at the waterfront because it's nonsense. It complicates everything they can do down there disregarding the parking itself. If the road has to get closed off, then the beach aren't going to have access and the proposed idea that they have for the stage extending to the waterfront, the front of the garage, which would become an indoor pavilion, building, again, compromising the situation and the area that we have to use. I am very much in favor of a pavilion. In fact, one of our member, former members proposed a pavilion along the lines of where they have that assault great beach, maybe the natural island, the whatever in the Rock Road in Westbrook and also the 1000 Thompson's Point. Maybe even put a smaller version of a pavilion in the right of Mary and Peter Stone School. But I don't think it should be at the water. I think if we had a boat in here, a building where we could have shelter from rain and sun and put it up possibly between the van stand and the parking area for the boats and trailers where I think there's enough room for a reasonably sized pavilion, it would get a lot of use. Another issue everybody brought up is bathroom, or at least dwellers. And I think we can very easily accommodate that and should, uh, perhaps with the composting toilets that don't require water supply or is that a system? And there's a composting toilet setup at the Miss Stop on Route 95, uh, just in Massachusetts. I think it's Solberg, just across the state line over to Hampshire. And I have stopped there over times over the years and I've always been impressed with those toilets. They've been operating for I don't know how many years. I'm in Maine for 50. And they don't have any odor and there's no water requirement. So I think there are ways to deal with that. Give the people a toilet down at the beach area where everybody seems to want it. And we can also have the performance setup that the admin group has proposed, but just not at the water. And we take the building down, it opens up the entire vista to the location for the waterfront activities, which are a significant part of what happens at Mitchell Field every day in the summer. I'm definitely a voter for yes, it's going to be everything done with and move on. Waiting another year for further study and fundraising is yet. They've already had six months or more to work on that and still don't have any term commitments in writing to fund this thing. And maybe it's available, maybe it's not, but I think the building is a white element to say and needs to go. Thank you.
Sue Parks and Lisa, I, I need a clarification, uh, for disclosure of fishing family. Um, is that building, um, going to be in the way for boats launching? And, um, is there going to be a limitation on the size of the boats that can be launched from that? And I'm thinking of, um, lobster boats, um, for the fishing. Do you have any answers for that, Davey?
Okay, thank you.
So you can look at the background on the side. The, um, boat launch traffic will, as I said, will use the old service road that's been closed off that will go through the lower meadow. And when you see that angular red arrow coming in off the hillside, that's the path they will follow and they go out to the causeway. The boat launch is 20 feet wide. It is listed as all tide. I don't know that that means all draft at low tide, but, um, I think yesterday they indicated that the concrete, um, ramble will at least project down into the water for about five feet at low tide.
Don, I understand that you had at least one boat hauler come down and help you with the design to make sure that the turn radius was there to allow them to launch some of the larger boats for boats to down.
That is correct. There was a, um, discussion about the turn radius. When you look at the diagram, which we have over there, it shows you the boat launch. Uh, there is a turnaround out on the causeway to get you, uh, get set up and back down. And they had, um, Billy Sachs that could come out and look at the diagram and everything. And they actually modified the design to widen, uh, the turnaround radius to be able to accommodate their delivery vehicles to put boats in the water. And we had to be careful about doing that because if we altered the design too much, it would negate the permanence that they already had for NERBA and Army Corps. But they were able to make that expansion without disturbing their programs.
I'm Dave Zamaruski, I live on the net. Um, first, I'd like to thank Don and to a le, to a lesser extent, the rest of the committee, of which I am a member. Don has put years of what I call mystical labor into this. He has spent endless hours working with people who do the work, making sure that people love, like the commercial haulers came down and gave them their inputs so that they could launch their boats. Um, it's just been an outstanding, uh, example of what you can do if you truly apply yourself. Some of the comments that I've heard here, which they may not be intended to denigrate Don's work, including the comment about parking being so far from the, uh, from the waterfront, are fundamentally misplaced. Though every issue that has, that is part of the boat launch project has been vetted, re-vetted and re-vetted. If you look at that, at that map in front of you, the picture, virtually the entire space to the left of the pier is off limits to the town. That's niche space. It's waterfront that is not available to be used by us. So the usable waterfront for us consists of the pier. And you can see the waterfront at the pier is essentially inaccessible because it's large rip ramp everywhere. So essentially that relegates us to the right inside of the pier, that small strip of Sandy Beach. If you go down there in the summer, those of us on the committee tend to spend a whole lot of time down there. That is where everybody congregates. They are squeezed in that space by the building. As virtually everyone we've talked about said, if you were going to plan a field that was usable for the town as passive recreation space, you would never choose to put a building there. That's the space for shade and trees and picnic tables, maybe a pavilion. And there's no, there's, there is additional parking field to address a separate point. Look around the room, including myself, most of those parking spaces, virtually all of them are way up at the top. They're not accessible. The parking at the bottom is a valuable resource for handicapped, for kids, for all manner of people who don't have access to remote parking. We've identified as part of the discovery process here, we've identified, and I think Don touched on this, multiple other places on the field that would be suitable for a recreational center where that could be desirable. Honestly, a recreational center that's, that's so far out on the peninsula on one side of town, yeah, it does happen to be my side of town, probably not even the ideal place to put it on the field because we're truly interested in a community center. It would be more centralized, a lot of fire station. But that's the proposal that's in front of you. I'm going to vote to tear that building down and I think it's a no brainer because I've been involved in this for so long that I'm sick and tired of it. And any delay that occurs is simply going to be more money to the town when we eventually have to tear this down. Because we've seen it before, fundraising on a hope and a prayer in this town is our sort of stock and trade. sort of stock and trade for not doing anything, and eventually having to confront the fact that something does need to be done. Something does need to be done about this building, and the town benefits from that because it opens up that space to be used for recreation. For those of you who've been out to Eagle Island or Pier Point, you've seen the toilet facilities there, they're fabulous. They don't require wells, they don't require dripping up the ground, they can be placed virtually anywhere that's accessible. So I can't condense the past few years of discussion of this adequately in this meeting, but I want to circle back and just say, Don has done a fabulous job. There's literally not a rock that he hasn't turned over and tried to look at alternatives here. And it occurred to an overwhelming majority of us on the Mitchell Field Committee that this building should be torn down, and that is in the town's best interest. Thank you.
I just wanted to be brief about the town's figure of 230,000. We did rely on a consultant for that information. We got a report, the Beacon Environmental Report. It was funded by a grant from the state DEP to look at several buildings in Mitchell Field and to determine what hazardous materials were there, what it would cost to remove those hazardous materials. And in addition, we were provided with the cost to remove the administration building structure. So it was a range for remediation if we were going to demolish. The range was from 80,000 to 130,000 from our consultant. And for removing the structure, again, under the demolition option, the structure removal was 80 to 100,000. We used the high-end number for remediation of 130. We used the high end for the removal of the structure, which was 100,000. That's how we came up with 230,000. We've also been informed by the main DEP that there would be up to 50,000 available to use. We would have to apply for it for grant funding for removal of hazardous materials. So that figure we have on a piece of paper, someone may question it, is it accurate, is it not? But that's the basis of the town's figure.
Frank Dastino, great out. My understanding is the boat launch was designed with that building being right where it is. So suddenly, we're getting feedback that the boat launch isn't going to work because the building's there. Well, it's one or the other. I'm confused by that. The other thing I'd like to say is, this warrant should be defeated because it's not giving the town all the options. We're debating whether or not to destroy the building or to rehab it. The warrant does not address the rehab at all. It's biased. So for that reason, whether you're for this building or against it, in the interest of fairness and full disclosure, and to give every citizen in this town a chance to vote yes or no on this, we should have a warrant, or two warrants. And this was really to the selectmen that swiped them, their meetings, and unfortunately we were ignored. So nothing's going to be delayed here. See, the yes or no on this warrant, and I think it should be known so that we can address all the options. The last thing I'd like to say is, the parking, again, the boat launch was designed, and if they didn't include the parking with that, that's a contest. Why not? And as far as building the parking, if you look beyond the building, I see a lot of land there where flash trucks and trailers and boats could be parked. So give this group a chance to raise the money, and we're not expecting anything by doing that. As has been stated more than once, the remediation will take at least a year. During that year, this group will fundraise. We'll see where we're at. You can't take the building down for at least a year. So for that reason, I vote not voting no on this, and I hope others will too, so that we can get a fair, clear, and concise couple of warrants to take into account all options of this building. Thank you.
The boat launch design includes the parking at the concrete pad, and it is not about the boat launch traffic and whether that will function because the building is there. It will. The reason we want to remove the building is because we're concerned about the other people who use Mitchell Field, the swimmers, the kayakers, the day hikers. The removal of the building facilitates a separate traffic pattern that ensures pedestrian safety so they don't have to interact with the trailer traffic. So I want to make sure everybody understands it. The boat launch will function whether the building's there or not there. It's what we're trying to do to enhance the recreational opportunities that people enjoy at the field now and provide A, a level of safety, and B, a smooth traffic flow. Because if we keep building, then the cars come down, they're not going to be slicing through the boat launch traffic to try and get over someplace where they can turn around. The diagram on the side explains how to do that. So just want to make sure everybody understands the boat launch design, the traffic flow, that will function if the building's there. What we're trying to do is enhance the opportunity for people to enjoy the waterfront, the swimmers, the hikers, the biggers. Thank you.
Those pressed next, I'd like to clarify one thing that Mr. Dastino referred to, parking within that red oval behind the admin building, that is the Lower Meadow, and there is so much wetland up there that we cannot develop one for parking. So it has been moved out. There is other parking available for it away, but not immediately behind where the admin building is, except it's already there now.
I'm Beth Malden from Harpswell, Maine. I grew up almost right across the street from this piece of property. And when I was growing up, there was the fuel depot there, which was after its usefulness, was the land was given back to town. And we were given a gift of a beautiful piece of property, that we have the opportunity, and nobody's spoken to this, of having this land remain as it was prior to the fuel depot being there. From an aesthetic point of view, which is how I'm looking at this, the building marries that aspect of the property. It is a gift, and the opportunity now is to move forward and bring it more back in line with its natural state of being. So I would vote to have the building removed, so that we can all enjoy this beautiful place to continue to have recreation there, swimming, kayaking, all of the outdoor walking and without the mark of this building being.
Phil Conner, still. This is a very complicated setting, and it's been made more complicated by the way it's worded on the warrant. So we have prepared a website, and we have a QR code, which is available on handout, where you can take a picture of this if you want to, but it pretty well, it does a good job of explaining it. A couple of points I want to hit before, to clarify some things that have been said, is the appearance of the building will change greatly with the plan that currently exists. It will turn it into a picnic area, a place for performances or for meetings, that sort of thing, and public restrooms, 24/7 public restrooms. Parking keeps coming up. I think this is a virus that's in the Mitchell Field Committee. The parking is a problem now because there isn't any except for the donut area, but Don has done a super job of, I think at the openances, he parked 500 cars on Mitchell Field. Admitted that was stairway of parking, but it was 500 cars. And we have identified different sites where parking can be, so it's, again, it's not an issue. The location, where the building is now, is an excellent location to provide services for the boat launch people that are around there, restrooms and meeting rooms, or perhaps if they need some management, I don't know. But anyway, it's right there at the very convenient of the boat launch, so it would be helpful for that, and it would be a great location for meetings or presentations and stuff like that, to be down there near the water where it is now, and to look out over the water and see. One thing that had been made very clear here today is, what we want to do by voting no is have a chance to finish our plan on the building and fund it with non-taxpayer funds. Don't know if there are any or enough generous people in Harpswell, but I think there are that will fund this to make it work. So it would not be a taxpayer thing. All these other things, talk about hiding, don't know where the funds would come from there, but don't think, they're talking about doing a non-taxpayer thing. The delay is not an issue because it's going to be delayed by the very nature of what needs to be done. The building needs to be cleaned up before we can improve it or tear it down. So there's already going to be a delay. So please, go to the QR code or go to the website and find out the details on this, and please consider voting no for this, so that we have a chance to put up a really good asset for the town. Thank you.
Rich Gray Allen, I'm voting to tear it down. John has a history of delaying things and having to get up and paying extra costs. The building is not a great place for the recreational development of the beach area. The people that come there want to be able to use the area if there were a concert venue or something like that, other than where we have the bandstand, would require year-round accessibility, extra costs. I doubt that it would be self-disappointing. I'm sure it would end up like the bandstand, back to the town after a few years. So if something were to be put there, I'd rather see it new and put further off near 123. I don't know what it will have as far as a traffic impact if we start to put something down there that's a major venue like Thompson's Point, like somebody mentioned. Now, I just don't think it's the fit for right there by the water, and I'm voting against lock here.
Dorothy Rosenberg, Harpswell, sorry, basic toilet room. This session turned out to be exactly what could be expected of them, which is that people who were already, who already had opinions, who already had a stance on what should be done with these questions, came, raised issues that they felt were important, raised a number of other issues about cost, uses, whether or not planning had taken place or needed more planning to take place, and disagree with one another civilly. This is exactly the conversation that should have taken place at town meetings. Harpswell is very proud of its history as a town meeting-based government.
I wouldn't get you.
The purpose of town meeting is for as many members of the population who can come, come together to hear these arguments, inform themselves, and make a decision. That is not what is happening here today. The people who came today are the people who already had a pretty clear idea of what they thought about these things. There are, I think, about 100 people here at most. Town meeting was closed because more than 420 people were getting room, more people were waiting in line. Those people came because they were interested either in this issue or another issue. The people who are not necessarily interested in this issue or that issue would have been informed about what we come here today to discuss. They are not present, and they are not open to that information, and we do not have the opportunity, which is what town meeting is for, to be able to convince, or not convince, our fellow citizens of how we should act on issues which are fairly significant for the town and quite expensive as well. I think that we have failed to do what we really ought to be doing under the form of government that we have. These questions belong in front of town meeting, they don't belong on the ballot. For that reason, I would encourage people to vote no on both of these issues, because we need time and opportunity to gather more information, but in particular, to talk to our fellow citizens and allow that decision to be made democratically and after voting no. Thank you.
Amy, I vote the net. I want to reiterate the comments that were made, not the comments, but the accolades that were given for Don Miskel. Mr. Miskel has served as an unpaid employee to this town for I don't even know how many years, and the work that he has done at Mitchell Field has been extraordinary. Mitchell Field is a gentleman. There is probably no other community in the state of Maine, I would say in the Northeast, that has the resource that we do with Mitchell Field. There's currently a group that is trying to take a look at Mitchell Field from a holistic standpoint. We were, it was suggested with regard to the fire station, that we should look at the holistic needs of the community with regards to fire and safety protection. And that is proposed to happen on Mitchell Field. I think what we have in some ways, I want to make one other correction. I believe it was Ms. Odd who said that the town has owned Mitchell Field for 45 years. That is not correct. I think she probably knows that. The federal government owned Mitchell Field for 45 years. The town, as Ms. Malden stated, was very fortunate to get it. What we have here is the nexus of a good idea with the wrong building in the wrong place. We do need and could benefit from a recreational facility in town that offers meeting space and bathroom space, but not in a building that really would cost more to renovate than to tear down and rebuild with something that is actually more up to date in terms of all the different things that we can do with our buildings now. Furthermore, a building in that location for a community recreation should be someplace that everyone in the community can get to, and that is certainly not the case with the building in Mitchell Field. In addition, I'd like to just say, I'm reading from my notes here. So I think that this, the other thing is that there's been proposed to be like wedding venues and meeting space and things like that. We have private operators that offer venues for wedding space, and I don't think that the town of Harpswell should be competing with those people. We should allow them to We should allow them to make their profit and do what they need to do there. Not that they would be charged to use Mitchell Field, but I do think we should not be confusing private and commercial venues with public venues. So I guess that's about it. I think I would just reiterate also what Beth said. Because this facility, and I'm speaking about Mitchell Field, because the field is so beautiful, we should return it in every, in every way that we can to its pre-US government stay of status. It's a, it's a phenomenal place for passive recreation. It's a phenomenal environmental asset and it's a phenomenal place for commercial fishing and recreational beachgoers to enjoy the field at the same time. Let's keep it that way. Let's not try and put too much there and end up throwing the baby out with the bathwater. And let's not do this piecemeal. Let's look at the plan as a whole, look at the field as a whole, and come up with something that everyone can enjoy and that everyone can have a say in. Thank you very much. Last thing, these folks that are proposing, as I understand, and I don't disagree with their idea about recreation, but they have had a lot of time to come up with the money for this and plan for this and it keeps getting extended and extended and extended. Let's get this thing done. I'd say vote yes, please. Kathy Diambesina, Great Island. We're not asking for room and starts and we didn't have a lot of time. All we're asking for is a year. And it's going to take a year, if it permits, the remediation, by the time the remediation is moved forward, it will take at least a year. We're not saying don't take the building down. If we can't come up with the funding for this plan, take it down, but give us that year. And we weren't given that opportunity. And I think the plan is a beautiful plan. If you look at the webpage, it is so detailed and we do need event space in town. You know, Harpswell's really spread out, but we are all one and we all should take care of one another, not fight against each other. Penney's Harpwell, I'm over there, or Boy only Island's just too far. It's not too far. They come to the concerts and it's a beautiful spot, but if the concert's canceled because of raining, that's why we didn't go here. So give it a chance, look at it, give us the year. That's all we're asking. We're just, don't, don't run it and take it down. No, it's going to take a year before it can be taken down. So give us that time to come up with funding. And again, if we don't, then take it down. But at least look at the plans. There's beautiful webpages, so give it a chance. Thank you.
I just want to commend this, like I mentioned, for putting it on the warrant. They will be voted in. People that are in this room, 60 in mass, I just didn't count them, that's my different way left. So I am glad for 47 hundred voters that they all have the opportunity to vote whichever way. So thank you for putting it on the warrant. I wish most of them on the warrant, so kudos to you.
Those rights are protected. The whole title will come out of the meeting. Everybody agrees it'll take a year to get this building remediated if something can be done. Then I'm going to suggest that the group that is interested in renovating it take that year and see if they can raise enough funds to recreate what they've got on their plan, I suspect perhaps a billion or whatever. And let us go and get this building out of the way. They're still going to have to demolish all of the office space they have in the building and preserve the garage part for their co-institution. And then leave the slag because that's what's going to remain out of what we do. Years ago, when we had the water tower controversy, a group called Friends of Mitchell Field, I think, trying to raise money to repurpose the water tower. And there was no viable way to do it, so the tower came down. This group wants to repurpose this building, which is, in many regards, a high score and an impediment to development. And I would like to see them take their energies and their interests, raise the money they need, and then with the public and private cooperation, recreate some of the things they were talking about somewhere else besides on the waterfront. And if they have a year to do it, let's see if they can do that without any more extensions. Thank you.
Well, good morning. I'd just reiterate about the costs. Bathrooms are part of this. They are the more expensive part of the actual renovations of the building. It actually is around $833 per square foot to take care of the new bathrooms that would be proposed and those would be fully functioning bathrooms. And the reason that cost is so high per square foot is based on needing to bring in water and subject to deal with that. Honestly, that should be a town approach since that's been asked for for 20 years plus, but, um, we are trying to offer that as a no-cost solution to the town so that there is a greater benefit to our community to have that. The, then the renovations of the small gaming area in Performance Area actually come in at less than $270 per square foot. So this would be far cheaper to renovate than to build something new. I just want to make that clarification as a holistic overview of this site. Thank you very much.
Right, thanks, Tina, Great Island. The word extension came up. No one's looking for an extension in time. We're simply saying that in order to proceed with the removal of the toxic materials, it'll take at least a year to do that. What this group is asking for is to vote no on this warrant. And unfortunately, the remediation, this warrant's flawed, its remediation, uh, was tied to destruction of the building, uh, unfortunately for us because we need to defeat this warrant for that reason. It's skewed, it's biased. No one's asking for an extension. Defeat the warrant, proceed with the remediation efforts. That will take at least a year. During that year, this group will either raise the money or they won't. No extension involved. Thank you.
Hi, Katie Neal, Harpsweller. I just want to point out that to remediate the building, um, there are two different costs. One cost if you're tearing the building down, a different cost if you want to rehave the building. So it makes sense to have them separate, to have one clear warrant where we can say, are we saving the building, yes or no? And if the answer is no, then we move forward. If the answer is yes, then we can move forward as a community as well. So I think this is the clearest way for the voters to vote rather than complicating it with several different items that was previously proposed. Also, I'm hearing a lot of conversations around raising funding for, um, building the beautiful building that was proposed, but, um, as the Stolen Men Overcare talked about with the fire station, um, no conversation about ongoing costs. So great that we can do fundraising to build this building, but what about the inevitable ongoing costs that are going to be, um, shouldered by the town and the taxpayers? Thank you so much for coming to your QR code. Related to that, as it says in that plan, um, if I wanted to use the space, which would be a town building managed by a separate entity, I would have to rent that space to hold my volleyball classes or my yoga classes or any of the things that I wanted to do. So that funding model is based on all of the community groups renting the space back from them so that I can use the stand. There are currently spaces available at Harpswell Coastal Academy for office buildings. Please, somebody who's hoping to use it, that would be great as well. I have two cross country meets happening at Mitchell Field, um, this spring, which is very exciting. We're bringing, um, six different towns together to have little kids run down the field. Um, we had a beautiful kite flying event, um, down there over the kids' spring break. And I am so grateful that it is an open, beautiful space that it, like Beth spoke to. It is special, flying a kite down by the water, looking at, um, Mount Washington. And I think we need to leave the waterfront as is. I'm very excited for a boat launch so that we can actually launch our boat and not get stuck in the mud as we sometimes do when we don't time the tide properly. Um, so it doesn't seem to me like a space down at the waterfront and that prime location makes sense. Also, I personally love being able to hold events across the town, at the Cuny's Harbor Community Center, the Oars Island Schoolhouse, um, and then whether it's at the Crayage or it's at Centennial Hall or at the Scotts Hall, being able to be the community in all of the different spaces, I think is super important as we are in town that's spread out. So I just don't know that pushing forward this item for this admin building makes sense. I'm not against having a recreation center, would love to be part of that conversation. Um, and I think it makes sense to consider Mitchell Field in a holistic perspective. Thank you.
Jeff Good, Oars Island. Um, I'm actually, I guess, one of the few people who did not come when my decision made already, so I'm interested in the information. I've, I've heard some, some talk about the remediation taking a year, um, and during that time the fundraising could go on to, for the, the renovation structure. So if this item is defeated, will there be any remediation that happens in that, if that took a year? Or let's simply press the hold button on all of the above?
Right. Um, the, the vote is to, um, remediate and demolish. And if you vote no on that, then neither happens and it's delayed until, you know, something else happens.
Okay. And, and the remediation, is it, um, are you removing materials that are in the building? Um, so, so the building would have to be either renovated or destroyed to, to do that, or there, are there materials in the ground around the building?
Uh, it's, it's the building. It's asbestos and, you know, toxic materials that need to be removed before it can be demolished.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? All right, this vote will close this section of the hearing and move on to, uh, Harbor Waterfront Orders.
Hello, I'm Paul, Harvard Towns, Harvard Master. Um, I'll give you a little bit of background of what I heard to a couple of committee members of working groups that are here. So over a year ago, the selectors approached by a side that we had asked, the town considered bringing more touring water off of Port Hurst, in town, in Harpswell Waters. The board at that time decided to take different approaches and form a work group to address issues that may be happening, conflict between what the waterfront and recreational reserves and all the activities that need to happen. So that group formed last April. And since then, they've taken on the, uh, the water specification plan that you see over there on the right hand side and also on the screen. And what we do is we help guide committees and staff, um, when reviewing anything, whether it be morgue activity, opera culture placement, um, even wherse they go in, propose wherse. Uh, we use this tool to help guide, um, whether something's appropriate to go over certain locations that propose. So I didn't want to jump into too much detail and I want to give you the background of what, um, what this group has been tasked with. If, uh, if there's a member that wants to speak to it, it's a couple of them, I'll let them take over. Darcy?
Darcy denied it was out of work, so.
Um, yeah, so I missed the very beginning, but I was going to call that to give you the background of this. So, um, everyone kind of uses the water in these areas more than all of the work we did. And the biggest thing that we added was the commercial fishing activity, which hadn't really been documented in kind of a legacy way. So there was really no way for even state agencies like DMR to understand where fishing activity happened in Harpswell. So we thought that was an important item to add to the information around the water ton in Harpswell. That was kind of what put the most of our time, was adding that area, which is reflected over there. It's very complicated. Harpswell has an incredibly rich, um, fishing community with a variety of different fisheries. So we kind of captured this pretty much, I think, as much info as we could from the actual fishermen. And that's why it looks very busy. It's got a lot of layers for lobstering, scalding, hooking, European oysters, um, we've got seaweed harvesting in there, a couple of fish weirs. And then all the smaller dots around the edges are all of the existing, um, morays and wherks in the town. So you can see there's a lot going on at the waterfront and that's why we thought it was pretty important to do this kind of initial capture of what's happening in Harpswell just to help maintain all the activities that are going on and hopefully land that are for the future so that we can keep them what they're doing. Happy to answer any questions.
Hi, Bill Chay, Oars Island. Uh, I just am new to this. I just actually saw the warrant today, so I apologize if I'm asking questions that are documented somewhere else. So I understand one of the main things is the introduction of the fifth classification legacy fishing areas, but I don't understand the definition of it. The wording in the definition in the class is very general and very vague. So could, is there a, and maybe a Harvard master can answer or somebody on the committee can answer, how is it, how is it determined that an area is a legacy fishing area, are there criteria? Uh, I understand that the selector would vote to, to change the classification. How does the recommendation get made to the select board? Because virtually, that means three people or a majority of the three people can make a decision to, to classify them or not. I'd like to understand better what is meant by legacy here since the other four classifications seem to be quite broad and would, would cover it. I appreciate an explanation on that. Thanks.
So, uh, the information that we used to create these layers was actually something that was the better part of the year to do. We reached out to all of the commercial fishermen in Harpswell. We have a series of at least three, um, open houses essentially in different areas of town on Sundays to make sure that, um, anyone who did fish for a living would have a chance to come in and participate. We also created, we basically started with gigantic wall sets and maps like that and had the guys, um, draw on their, their areas where they land to fish. And we used color codes, just like you see, the colors of red for lobster, yellow for scalding. We had those three meetings. We also, we created little individual paper, you know, regular sized papers with, um, a section of, there's 18 of them that cover the whole town so that we could send those home to fishermen that didn't feel comfortable coming to a public site or weren't available on the days that we have that. And then amongst us, the, the group that was involved is local, local people, some of the fishing family members and, or know people that fish. And we basically chased down the rest of everybody that we could think of and went to their kitchen paper where their driveway and made them fill out where they fish on the map so that we could collect what we feel like is the most amount of information about the current fishing activity in Harpswell by the commercial licensed fishermen that live here. There's over 30 licensed fishermen took part in, um, mapping out these areas with input from, um, others that, you know, chose to not write their names down, fishermen or private traders that way. But we feel like we got a good representation of all of the areas that are currently fished in Harpswell from the fishermen who actually fished those areas. So that's, that's where this came from. So that's where this came from.
Amy, I bow the neck. I just want to start off and say thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. We can't protect what we don't know is there. And I just, as the Chair of the Planning Board, we see all kinds of protections for land use and all kinds of classifications for land use. But what happens in the marine environment is equally as important. And not only that, but it's affected by what happens on land. And so to know where these important areas are gives us information that I think is critical for the town, for our heritage, and for those that will follow us. So thank you for doing that. And we look forward to hearing your updates. That said, I've got just a couple of de minimis suggestions for this document. One is, this is recommended by the Select Board. And yet, when we look at the actual language, the use of Board of Selectment runs throughout. I think it's at nine or 10 places. I would really suggest being consistent and efficient. So I would suggest replacing, and more inclusive, replacing Board of Selectment with a Select Board in all locations. And then in the last paragraph, changing classifications, it says... Let's see. Okay, no, I'm sorry. I'm moving to section 3.2.1. Trying to... I'll just have to read the whole thing. "The classification of areas of the waters of Harpswell shall be recorded on a non-regulatory map of the town. Herein and after referred to as the Waters Classification Plan, prepared for the purpose of providing comprehensive water use data to help the public understand the nature and location of commercial fishing resources and other water uses within town waters, to guide the city, the citing of new water-based activities so as to avoid conflicts with traditional uses, and three, provide information to the harbor master, the committee, the Select Board, and I would add the Planning Board, which may be used in their discretion as part of blah, blah, blah." So I would add the Planning Board because we are so frequently asked to review projects and we have no clue what valuable resource might be in the waters off the land-based use that we are being asked to review and approve. So just suggest adding that as well and then correcting or changing the language to Select Board. Thank you, and thanks again for your efforts.
I think those are good suggestions, but it's too late. The ballot's been printed. The staff didn't miss the Board of Selectment reference. It's something we've been used to for a number of years when we are moving towards Select Board. So that was something that was missed. In terms of Planning Board, I think that's a good suggestion, but there's not time to add that to this.
Thank you for that clarification. We are having growing pains in Harpswell. And having a public hearing on an item that can't be changed after the public hearing is quite frustrating for those of us who come. And the last thing I want to say is, thank you again to all of you who sat up here and looked there and listened to us and who do all the work. There's no way you could have known that we were going to overrun the limits or exceed the capacity of this room. You did the best you could, and I really appreciate it.
Mary Ann, Mary Ann May. I wanted to just talk to the process of how we got to these maps. As you know, I tend to fill a lot of meetings. And was able to be with the committee as they put the map together. There are new fisheries coming to town. We have a very, very large shoreline with very many fisheries. And it gets kind of hard to know what is being used and what isn't. And for a new fisher to try to get a license for something and try to pull together where might be a good position for it becomes very difficult. It becomes very expensive. What the fishermen have done here is put all the different fisheries together on this map. This is helpful for someone who's trying to get a new aquaculture license. This is so great because it's a proactive way for not only the fishermen, but various places in town to know where is, was all this base and where there isn't. I just wanted to make that comment because I think it's just a marvelous manner in which they proactively got ahead of something that could have been a problem. Thank you.
Jeff Good, Orson Island. What impact would the designation of the Legacy Fishing Areas Town? I understand that it's going to provide more information that you still... Would it have any impact in terms of restricting certain types of activities or encouraging other kinds of activities in those areas?
I think we should defer to the harbor master on that question. Currently, we have the four zones. So maybe you can talk about how you use that information when you receive mooring applications, aquaculture applications, that type of thing, and how adding that Type 5 may help you and assist you.
So Type 5 really came along because we had no information about where fishermen in Harpswell and surrounding areas fish in personal waters. And one of the biggest drivers behind it was when reviewing aquaculture, the state made Marine Resources makes you, or makes any municipality justify a decision that you have towards that application. So if town staff and committees review an application and they say, "Well, there's a lot of poaching happening in that area," you can certainly say that. But the state, they want to see something that can quantify that. And when you have a document that has public input and you can physically show the state agencies something that the community has voted on or at least discussed publicly. Previous administrations and staff at the state level have said that they will hold that on the highway. They will use that when reviewing the application. So I guess what I'm trying to say is, just because it's on the map doesn't mean that it's an end-all, be-all. It doesn't mean that just because you propose a mooring or aquaculture in a poaching area that the town's going to say, "No, absolutely no way." It just means you need a little bit more review, a little bit more scrutiny. Maybe reach out to fishermen that we know participate in most fishing activities in those areas. And just kind of review it a little bit further. Does that help?
Larry, I was kind of, it's actually a follow-up to your question. With the use of the term legacy, are we implying that we're going to restrict some of these areas to what used to be the traditional scalping, lobstering? Whereas in the very recent past, we've seen the mussels and oysters aquaculturing take off. And as we move into the future, there are probably other types of aquaculture or fishing bio growth that will be created and brought forth. Will use of the term legacy restrict or am or prevent that type of fishery from being created and brought into these waters? That would be my concern.
So ultimately, the Maine Department of Marine Resources, they have the ultimate jurisdiction over aquaculture in any useful waters statewide. What this work group was trying to do was identify areas where fishing already occurs. And just to kind of go back to what I said before, it's not to exclude anybody from the area. It's just that the work group felt that it needed more review if a proposed anything was proposed to be in an area that had the legacy fishing. And it's just something, again, that quantifies DMR that the community has come together and looked at this as a whole. And then this work group consists of commercial fishermen, aquacultures, landlords, waterfront property owners. So it's really the collective group that's kind of come to this conclusion waiting to see over here for the maps. Does that help? Okay, great.
Bobby, especially. I don't have a question, I have a comment to the Select Board. I think from the release decision on the last topic that you spoke to me. I think obviously certain issues that come before this town meeting need to be voted on. And we do that at the town meeting. I think a judgment is required. And I think frankly, your judgment wasn't great on this one. I'm not saying we're going to try and do it. It's been done, and you've done it. And I'm talking about the future. I think on issues such as the Mitchell Field, such as this, the issues today, these are not simple little bond issues. They really aren't. They are issues that the community really cares about. And I think if we're going to keep the spirit of our town meeting going alive, we should not start relegating important issues off to a ballot where it's yes or no and a discussion. In fact, we can look at how many people are left here now. So I hope in the future you will err more on the side of keeping discussion in the public meeting and not shutting it off to a vote. Thank you.
Nils J, Orson Island. Paul, thank you very much for the explanation. So I guess my question is, looking at the definition of legacy fishing areas or multipurpose waters, what's the distinction actually? I ask what the distinction is between category two, multipurpose waters, and five, legacy?
That's a great question. So I think it was mostly, the work group just wanted to make it very clear fishing absolutely occurs in these areas. So it's not a, well, sometimes it's true for fishermen making them through it. There's some recreational law that enables it. This is where we know, in fact, lobster harvesting occurs, which we know is a word, but specifically the scalping, poaching. They have really specific areas that they harvest in. I think to show, I keep going back to DMR, but to show DMR that a lot of workers wanted to this, I think they wanted to make it very clear that Type 5 is what's very obvious for fishing or making fishing.
Hi, Jayne, Great Island. At the rest of the week, Saki. I wanted to thank the town for this committee, this work. I write about Harpswell a lot. Having served in the legislature, I wanted to be on this working group to address efforts to undermine fisheries, really. And I think the work, the Select Board held two workshops in response to this call for a moratorium, and then set up the working group. And I guess, I think Mary Ann, she did, said it very well. It was a very constructive process rather than a destructive process. It was getting so many different voices at the table. I'm not from a fishing family. I was, I guess, to be there because of the legislative experience and because I love Harpswell and support the culture and tradition of Harpswell. But because of the proactive town we live in, we came up with a very useful, constructive tool that will guide people. And as Paul said, the Department of Marine Resources makes final decision, for example, aquaculture leases. But the more information somebody has if they're applying for lease, it's a lot of money and a lot of time to apply. If you go through that process without enough information, you may find out later that if you had done this, it would have been better. Like you're, it's too late, you have to reapply. You have to spend more money and more time. So this is to educate, to support the fisheries we have, to support what's coming in the future. So thank you, Harpswell.
I just wanted to add to that. The vote is to create this Type 5 water classification, but our intent is to be able to review where those fishing areas are every year. So if someone has an issue or concern, or new fisherman comes to town, or someone who moves away, you know, we can make those changes at the town meeting every year. So it's meant to be a very hollow, transparent process. And once the, assuming the layer is added to officially the Waters Classification Map, this will all be available on the town website to, for anybody to see. You can turn individual layers on or off. You can zoom in on areas. It should be very useful and helpful for anyone who wants to look at it once we decide that it's something that you'd want to add. I just want to be clear about the amending the map, the process. It does not require coming back to a town meeting. So the voters will be creating this new Type 5 category. And then the work of the Aquaculture Task Force, they've identified these areas. We will have to have a public hearing. The Select Board will have to ultimately approve the zones and where they are, or the types where they are. And in addition to the work that the aquaculture group did to create Zone 5 or Type 5, you've also got a lot of recommendations to change some of the other areas. And I don't know if that's come up today. But again, that will be a process that the Select Board will be involved in. Harbor Waterfront Committee, Aquaculture Task Force. And maybe the Select Board is going to ask for the Planning Board's input. It's not required in the ordinance, but that doesn't mean they can't ask for the Planning Board's input. So the map revision is going to occur at the Select Board level after notice, public hearing, input from various committees.
All right, if anybody else wants to speak to this before we close this hearing? All right.
I just have a quick comment here, Jayne, Orson Island. I didn't know I was thinking about this before today. So I too was another person who came and learned today and he comes and opinion. Just listening to the comments around this though, and the purpose that is information to serve as a backup for then, which other decisions can be made. No decisions, this isn't enforcement or anything. It feels to me like it could have been called commercial fishing, the zone. It's been legacy. Legacy implies to me something that is given, set. And for anyone coming in new that they want to use those waters, it says to me that that's something off limits because there's a legacy there. But I understand the purpose of it. I just think it would be a better named zone to be commercial fishing. Thank you.
Anybody else before we close this hearing? Jim, a minute for the mic.
Jim, I'd like to thank the committee for the work that they've done. It's a continuation of some work that started years ago. And I just didn't want to see it die on the shelf. And Paul has done a great good job to pull that together and all the way to work it together. I appreciate the work completely. Thank you.
If you... Anybody else? Last chance before we close this hearing. And we want to thank everybody for sticking up. There are a few of you left. We're doing that, so thanks for being here.